Okay, we're good to go. Thanks.
Okay. I'd like to call the meeting to order this 28th of May 2020. This is a WebEx virtual hearing. The next hearing is June 25th, 2020 at 4:00 P. A. That will also be a WebEx virtual hearing. First, I'd like to swear in staff. If you would, raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give? Is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Please identify by saying your name.
Patrick Holland, I do.
Christopher Lor, I do.
Okay. Then I would like to do roll call. Commissioner Reed. Think he was on a minute ago. Carrie?
There you go.
I'm here, yes.
Okay, gotcha. Commissioner Fleming?
Here.
Commissioner Petrazzello?
Here.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner, is it Sour?
You has, here.
You has, I'm sorry. And then Commissioner Gray.
Not here.
Not here, good. In this public forum, anyone wishing to speak at the meeting must submit an email speaker slip at least two hours prior to this hearing. Twenty-four hours in advance notice is preferred such that the commissioners and staff can properly accommodate speakers. Your email to commission staff should include name, address, topic, and the case you wish to address. Those unable to use email, tag 6147244437 for alternative accommodation at least 24 hours in advance. Back first item of business is the approval of the Record of Action, which used to be called Minutes. Has everyone reviewed the Record of Action, AKA the Minutes? And have any questions or changes? Hearing none, can I get a motion to approve the Record of Action dated 2/27/2020?
Motion to approve?
We'll give a second.
Second, during.
Second. All in favor for approving, approval of the Record of Action for 2/27/2020? Say aye by saying your name.
KB.
Carrie.
Frank.
Kehoney.
And Steve. Okay, first case. University Impact District Case 19-12-002, 1590 North High Streets. Take it away.
The applicant is proposing to install two different blade signs on the exterior of the building. The high street sign will make use of the existing supports that currently exist on the building and has an area of approximately 40 square feet. The plaza sign is scaled to provide visibility to the street and will have an area of approximately 14 square feet. Per the recently approved graphics plan, projecting signs on High Street should have a maximum area of six square feet per side. Code would limit the sign to 42.3 square feet. And signs within the plaza shall have no limitations on size provided that there is a minimum of 10 feet of clearance. While the plaza sign is consistent with the UIDRB guidelines, the sign on High Street is not consistent due to its size. Staff recommend approval with the condition to reduce the High Street sign to no greater than six square feet per side based on UIDRB guidelines. The previous proposed sign was approximately 45 square feet. Staff recommends to approve with conditions.
We should be coming back.
Thank you. Is the applicant on, on the call? Mr. Moody?
Good, muted here.
Okay. Mr. Moody, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please continue with your presentation.
So we had come to the commission previously on this sign and had gone away with some notes. We were asked to provide some more context so that there could be a little bit better understanding of the surroundings, as well as some of the, some comparisons with some of the other signs that were already installed within the area. We were also told that, that it was felt that sign was a little too bulky and were asked to make it a little more airy. We tried to streamline it, made it a little smaller and reduced the width of it by 12 inches. So we've made it considerably more narrow in hopes that that would comply with the, with what it is that you're looking to see. We've also given plenty of, of comparisons to some of the other signs in the area so that you can see this in comparison with some of the sizes of the, the other signs along High Street. And you're saying that you lost my video? I'm still showing video, Chris, is that?
Yeah, you're back now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, is there anything else?
No, that's it. See if you have any.
Yeah. I'll open it up to commissioners for questions or feedback.
Can you describe the, can you describe the sign, how it's manufactured and, you know, what the face is, how they operate? What's opaque, what's not opaque, please?
Sure. Yeah, so the, the silver that you're seeing is actually to be a textured raw aluminum with a clear coat. And then the ventures is pushed through acrylic. So it would probably be protruding about a half to three quarters of an inch out of the face of that metal with opaque vinyl on the face. So you would see an edge lit on each one of those letters. The blue stripe that goes up the entire height of the sign is actually going to be perforated metal that has blue LEDs mounted inside of that. So that as you move around the sign, it will appear to sparkle. The top cabinet is just a, you know, the, on each side, you've got the blue circle. It's just a face, basically a facelit channel letter, so to speak, with then another face. The white Rev 1.
And that's. So the entire blue circle lights up and the vertical bar lights up. And the note on your drawing is pointing to the wrong location, right? The note down at the bottom says perforated aluminum painted blue, whatever, is pointing to the silver part. It should point to the blue part. That's why, that's why I was confused. So, okay.
Okay.
Other comments or feedback?
So I'm curious on the, on the top portion of the sign, the circular portion, did that get thinner? I don't recall from the previous hearing dimension of what that was.
Yeah, previously it was 34 inches wide total. And so we've got it down to 22 in order to still be able to accomplish what it is that we were trying to accomplish with the layers.
Okay.
So, yeah, we, we got it down as, as much as we could.
Okay.
Me too. You know, there's, there's some discrepancy. Oh, you have a thick the other way. Okay, got it. On your comparison, uh, draw, drawing with the signs, including the big bar and grill and the like. Yeah, that one, you're, you were a little, you were a little unfair to, to us, more, more than fair to you in terms of square footage. You've, you've, you've used the gross dimensions of the big bar sign to multiply to get 63 square feet. But you use the net dimensions for your sign. Calculating them equally, your sign would be 52 square feet as opposed to 40.7. You've used the gross dimensions on the other three, but on yours, you used a net dimension.
Okay. I mean, you're just saying that I used one instead of multiple, is that what you're saying?
I'm just read, reading your numbers. Okay, four, four times thirteen.
Oh, I should have taken the outline of the sign. You're assuming that big bar grill, it's a rectangle, 11 foot by five foot nine, and that's the total area. Whereas if you follow the sort of complicated edge around it, it would be a smaller area than your comparison diagram suggests. This is Kehoney.
I, I see what you're saying. Um, to be honest, I had my designer put this where, so I didn't even consider what that, they were when they did that.
So on the, on the, on the same drawing, you have McFadden's, which is the old sign in you. The question is, is your, are the mounting bars, the same mounting bars?
They are. I'm not certain that that is to scale or not, but, um, he has marked that it should be to scale. But those bars obviously look further apart on the McFadden's.
Yeah, there's a, there's a problem there.
For that McFadden's sign.
Yeah. My, 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 my feeling on this sign is that it would be, it would be okay if it was 10 feet like the McFadden's sign. And that's, that would be my opinion. I'm done.
I'm in, this is Kehoney. I'm in agreement with Frank's opinion. I guess I have two stipulations. I think the larger blade sign on High Street should be 10 foot in the vertical direction as the previously existing sign was. And I think the blue diameters of the Rev 1 portion of the sign should be identical in size. Currently, the High Street sign has a four-foot diameter circle. The one on the alley side is 44 inches in diameter. It's not a big differential, but I think they will look different sizes, which is a little goofy given that it's the exact same element. So I'm, yeah, I'm willing to vote for approval of this with those, assuming the, the applicant is willing to meet those two stipulation.
Okay. Other comments or questions from the commission?
Reason why you feel that it needs to be so much smaller? I mean, in comparison with the Long's sign, which is on the same building, which is 120 square feet, it's going to look pretty small in comparison, is that? I mean, I understand that that is a historical sign and that, and that that sign is there for a purpose, just aesthetically.
I think you just said it. It's, it's a dark sign and it's, and it's a sign for a very significant, very large tenant on the ground floor. And your sign to be equal to that, that doesn't fit within the hierarchy of the, of the building.
Yeah, but what we're proposing is only half.
With, this is Kehoney. What is your applicant's actual purpose? What does Rev 1 Ventures do?
Rev 1 Ventures is a funding company for the university, for Ohio State.
Yeah, so I'm in agreement with Frank. I'm agreeing, I'm in agreement with Frank. The Long's bookstore sign is an anchor tenant on the ground floor that's publicly accessible to the public. They can go in, buy a book, get some, get a drink. Rev 1 Ventures is a private company on the second floor that is not publicly accessible. They're not equal as, from the standpoint of the public realm.
Yeah. I completely agree with that. I don't, you're not drawing people to a bar, restaurant, to an event. It's something that people are going to identify and know because they know that where they're going to. You're not advertising on the street in the same way that places of public assembly are. And I actually think it's in the best interest of the business to have something that's slightly more elegant. It's a little bit less gross and I think that's in your best interest in this case.
I want to add.
Get some money.
I want to add too, it's not just that the Long's sign is a historic sign. It's actually, of course, repurposed from 15th and High, but that is the site, the original site of Long's bookstore. So there is sort of another factor that went into its placement there.
Any other comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Kehoney, if you would.
I move to, all right, here, I'll, I can do it. This is Kehoney. I move to approve the applicant's submission with the following conditions. The blade sign on High Street be reduced in height to 10 feet so that it matches the McFadden, in height, the McFadden site that you, sign that used to previously exist at that location. All other elements would be reduced proportionally. The alley side blade sign with the blue circle would be reduced in size to match the blue circle of the High Street sign. These changes can be submitted to staff for review and approval.
Second, the motion, it's Frank.
It's a motion, a second. All in favor, say aye, say your name.
KB. I'm sorry. KB, yes.
Carrie, yes.
Frank, yes.
Kehoney, yes.
And Steve, yes. Motion is approved.
Okay.
Next case. Case number 19-08-008 for 22 East 17th Avenue. Let's go ahead and get the background.
All right. The applicant is proposing a complete refresh of an existing pole-mounted sign cabinet, including paint and replacement of acrylic sign faces. The faces are flat white polycarbonate and the graphics are digitally printed vinyl. The applicant is proposing to repaint the cabinet with logo colors. The university district plan recommends that new signs should be regularly maintained and unused signs support should be removed. Broken faded signage and empty sign support suggest a vacant or inactive business. Staff recommend approve.
Thank you. And this is the same applicant. Mr. Moody has already been sworn in, so please continue your presentation for this.
Yeah, this is, just as he said, just an update. As you can see, the existing sign is in pretty rough condition. So we wanted to put a new face in there and repaint the, the pole skirt just to match and kind of make it look fresher.
Okay, thank you. I will open it up to commissioners for comment or feedback.
So this is actually a primarily residential street and I recognize that we're looking at replacement of an existing sign, but it seems extremely large graphically when the remain, remaining part of this street is residential. Does this sign dimension sit within the guidelines?
Are you talking, are you asking for the Columbus?
I, I'm asking about the guidelines for the dimensional limit of the signs. What is the size limitation that are, that are recommended within the guidelines?
For the lettering, I can answer that. For the lettering, it's 16 inches. This is an existing sign as though, which is recommended to be maintained.
Recommended to be maintained by the organization?
Recommended, that guideline's found in the university district plan.
Yeah, I mean, this is Kehoney. I guess my take on it is the, we would never approve a sign of this size on a residential street if it were new. But it's an existing sign that they're not modifying in any significant way. So they're within their rights to replace essentially the face graphic while maintaining the size of the existing sign. That's kind of my take on it.
And are we also reviewing the text that's on the base of the sign? And does that show up not on the face that's being shown here, but on the west face of the pedestal?
I was wondering about that. Where are, where is that cut vinyl on page two of the application?
That is actually on a window.
On what window? Where would that show up?
That's a good question. I don't have an image of that.
Okay, is that existing or is that part of the proposal for any change that's going on?
I believe that this is going to, you know, I believe they already have some vinyl on the window, but it's worn and so we are putting new vinyl on the window.
This is not an entry door, it's just?
I do not believe so. I, to be honest, I will have to check on that. I, I don't have that in front of me. Okay.
Um, we're looking.
I guess my, this is, this is Kehoney. My other question would be the, on page two, based, I mean, there are these type of gray rectangles with the sort of white vinyl. But if I read kind of the text, I guess what I, it's not clear to me. Are the gray rectangles vinyl as well? Or are they just meant to signify the window glass and only the, only the white logo and letters are actually the vinyl?
That's, that's correct. The gray is reverent, representation of the glass that's there and the white letters is what would be put on.
And Ron, this is KB again. So the graphic that we're looking at on this page, looking on the east side sign, would that be repeated also on the west side? Would it look exactly the same on the opposite side?
No, they've only asked to do one.
So what will it look like on the west side?
It should just be glass.
Maybe you're talking about the pylon sign or the vinyl signs?
Talking about the sign that says Pregnancy Decision Health Centers at the top of the.
That's, oh, that's this on both sides. It's a double-faced, so there's two faces, they're exactly the same.
Okay, so both east and west sides of that are identical.
Correct.
And the other comments?
Blue, the dark blue, we would normally require that to be opaque. Is that your intention?
Um, I can certainly make that the case.
A portion of the window.
Well, that, that would be, I, at least, that would be my, that would, I would need that in order to support this, that the background be opaque and let no light be transmitted through it.
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that would be no issue.
Is anybody bothered by the color of the base? Do you think it's a little too bright?
This is Kehoney. Yes, I agree with you.
I do too, KB.
Garish is the word I would use.
I agree. It's currently gray, right? So it's a little bit less evident.
Yeah, I would, I would tell you if the whole thing was gray, the, the, not the sign, but the, those, that funny, whatever that is at the top, that capitalist, those two bars of things. I would think if all one color would be better for me at least. I don't know why they're, I don't, I don't love the three tones of the base much at this point.
Agree.
I believe that it currently is, is brown or like a dark, like a bronze color.
Any other comments? Or do we have a motion?
First, a clarification. Are we, are we, do we have say over vinyl on glass? Staff?
Um, I'm not entirely sure. I, I would consider that a wall sign. Is that, if that's what you're asking?
I don't know.
The, any graphics that are applied to a window or, or, are managed by the graphics code in the same way that any, you know, freestanding sign like this would be. So we do have COA approval for that.
Okay, so it's within our purview. Well, I don't know what to say about that signage, honestly, especially since we don't know where it is. So, you know, I'd be willing to make a motion to approve the changes to the pylon sign, but not knowing where those others are, or even you're not knowing where they are, I would be.
Frank, I just, I pulled this up on Google Maps and I think there are center double doors and then there's a double bay window on the left and on the right. And I think it's the windows on the left side of the entrance on, you're facing it from 17.
Does it look fine to you then, Carrie?
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think it's kind of odd that it's on the left window and not the right because it's further from the door.
Further from the door, I agree with that. I feel that also it's cramped. I don't know if rather than having all bold capital letters, making it a mixed capital and small to be the same as the upper text might help. It feels tight. And the more I stare at the image of the proposal for the new pedestal sign, I feel the same way. I feel like the white text on the blue background, in a way, because it's so contrasty and because of the size of the letters relative to the perimeter, it's too dense. In other words, different kerning or a slightly smaller font with more space around the letters would be better. And the upper line of text is way too close to the logo. So either the logo would get smaller, some, some graphic recomposition of that material, I think, needs, needs to happen. It just feels way too dense.
Yeah, KB, I think you're right. And I think the logo is probably the biggest offender. It's too big.
It doesn't need to be that big. It's so clear as a graphic that smaller, it would be a.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Do we feel like they should re-present it or is it a staff approval if we give some parameters for recomposition?
Well, if we could be specific about what we're after, if, if, if we could, if we could say, reduce the logo by, you know, by 25% or something and just move Pregnancy Decision up a little bit from Health Centers and also, and then have some extra space between that and the logo. It's probably not a difficult thing for staff to review.
I mean, Ron, I, I want to make it easier for you. I sort of feel like there's so many moving parts though, because I completely agree with the graphic, the, the weight of the pedestal and its garish color and the capital. Maybe the better thing to do would be just take all these things into consideration, do a revised design and come back at the next, a month from now. I think it's going to help to see all of the changes in a single context. That would be my recommendation.
Sounds good.
I think that you guys already did this one time. It was a previous project manager who is no longer with our company, and so I think these changes were made already because of your requests, but I, I don't have that information because I was not the one that was there.
My comment is... Would you prefer to have them make a motion with the comments, or what they're looking for? Or would you rather come back with the, the design based on the input?
Well, I think that I can, I mean, what, what you're asking for, it does sound like it's complicated changes. I think that if you, I mean, it, it's pretty understandable if you want us to reduce the logo and, and, you know, give a little bit more spacing between the types of text. That's a pretty simple thing to do. And if you, you know, at, at that point, if you're thinking that you want to specify a color for that base, I mean, those are all real easy things to do in order to wait another month when they've already come. Not that I couldn't do that. I just would hate to have to tell our client, hey, we'll do it again, since they've already been through this a couple times.
Okay, so I guess the question to the commissioners, or would you, was anyone like to make a recommendation based on the information, or would we like to have it come back?
I would like to have them come back. There are too many moving parts for me. With, in addition, with clarification of the vinyl sign on the windows, window graphics.
Yeah, I agree with KB on that.
So in light of the vinyl sign, I don't know if this matters with the review board or not, but I know that the City of Columbus does not require anything that's under 10 square feet and not illuminated. So they don't actually, we don't pull a permit for that at all. So I don't know if that affects anything that you guys do or not, but just to note.
We're trying to help you.
I think, this is Keone, I think as Chris said, anything aesthetic on the outside of the building is within our purview. So I believe we're exercising our rights here. I think you've been given feedback to improve this, and I would agree with KB, given the, given the number of improvements that really ought to be made to this. The best way to move forward is just to come back and clean it up and present a presentation that addresses all the comments that have been made.
Just to understand exactly what it is that you're requesting, so obviously the spacing and size of the text and logo on the, on the faces, that color, you want to keep it similar to the color that's existing? Is that correct?
This is Keone. I agree. I agree with Frank. It's just you got dark blue, then white, then light blue, then the air sign. Just make it all one color. Personally, I don't care what color. I would probably suggest white, just so like the, what stands out is the actual sign at the top. I mean, but the whole point of a sign is to read the text, not to be distracted by the tripartite color scheme on the base.
I agree.
Okay, so you'd rather see it a light color than a dark then?
I would suggest you study what makes it most visually disappear and not compete with anything else or draw attention away from the sign.
Yeah, that would definitely, that's why I was questioning that. Because the background is in general dark, and so if we do white, it's just going to stick out like a sore thumb. But I, I can do whatever's, whatever you guys want to see. I mean, that's what changes I want to make.
Your existing photo shows that that color is, of that base is pretty innocuous. If that's what we're after, innocuous, that pretty much is.
You're talking about the existing base, Frank?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, you're using an intense color blue against a red brick building, and those are complementary colors, so it's going to draw more attention to itself for that reason. So I think it's just a matter of, you know, graphically studying it, being what you can do to make it less offensive and, and less visible and dominant in the, in the context.
Okay, and were those the only changes that you guys would like to see?
Well, then on the back too, I think KB had mentioned, not on the back, but on the, the window sign, I think, I think it's odd that the, the services offered are bigger than the name of the, of the business. I think it's a little bit, it's a little bit weird. And I looked at what's existing, and it's, it's upper and lowercase, which I think reads better as a rule than, than all caps.
Okay, easy enough.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Ron.
Next case, case number 20-03-003, 2154 to 2156 Tuller Street.
Yep.
Want to go ahead and do a description?
Uh, yep, staff report. The applicant is proposing replacement of windows on a two-family dwelling unit at 21, 2154-56 Tuller Street. The applicant is proposing to use Wingate vinyl windows with a hundred green exterior frame and a white interior frame. The structure is a contributing building on a corner lot facing Tuller in an alley between Norwich and Lane Avenues. The proposal meets the guidelines for window replacement. However, the type of the window the applicant is proposing is not on the approved windows list. Stacker recommends approve with conditions, conditions being windows selected from the approved window list.
Thank you. And is the applicant, MRZ Investments LLC, here?
Yes.
Okay, can you please identify yourself, state your name for the record?
Jay Zollers.
And do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, please continue with your presentation.
I was in your, I was in front of you guys on March, back in 2020, for the, a dub, for a two-family directly across the street at 2157, 2159 Tuller. And I brought an actual window in with me, and it is a Alliance Window System Wingate window. It had a white interior finish and a matching green exterior finish that matched the exterior of the building perfectly. That was approved. And I want to use the exact same window at 2154 and 2156. And the only difference is it will have a brown exterior to match the existing brown on the building. Everything else is the exact same.
Okay, thank you.
It's been approved, and I really recommend that you guys add it to your list.
The window type? You're talking about the window type?
The company.
Okay, thank you. Comments or questions from commissioners?
It's a nice building.
Agreed.
It seems to me we were pretty enthusiastic about the window that you showed us.
It turned out excellent.
If we already approved that type of window, would you, maybe you want to consider adding it to the list?
I would recommend that.
These are all custom sized?
Yes.
And they, they will have the same configuration of the existing windows in terms of where the separator bar is between the double-hung windows and the like?
Exactly, yes.
This is Keone. This is more a comment about the approved window list. I believe the approved window list was adopted from the HRC list, and the HRC list is probably a little more stringent than, might be appropriate for some of the buildings we deal with, because it, it's stuff that would have to be approved and sort of historically, you know, replicate historic conditions more stringently than, I think, some of what we're trying to do here. So I, that's just a sort of general comment on the list itself that I think we need to address sort of offline. I'm good with the application. I think, as Frank said, as long as the, the windows kind of match the general configuration of the existing windows, and they're custom sized to fit the openings without any additional spacers, then it seems good to me.
I do...
Yes, we thought, it's during. With regard to adding it to the list, which is a separate issue from what the applicant is asking for, it seems to me that it would be good to perhaps run that by historic preservation. They may not be aware of that type of window, and they may know something that we don't know. But I agree also. I'm definitely ready to just move on this and to vote positive.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
This is Carrie. I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
KB, second.
That's a motion, a second, for approval. All in favor, state your name as a positive.
Carrie, yes.
KB, yes.
Dureen, yes. I'm sorry.
Keone, yes.
And Steve, yes. Motion is carried. Motion is approved. Can I ask staff, between now and next meeting, if they can bring this series of window in, in front of HRC and see if we can get a report as far as, and any reason that we shouldn't add that to the list of windows and perhaps put that on the agenda to do so at the next meeting?
Yep, I'll add that.
I'll, I'll just chime in. This is Christopher Lor. The HRC window list, or the historic window list, is the basis for the university list. Here, let me turn on my video real quick. It's the basis for the, for the list, but the university district list is that plus. So you guys can add any windows that you wish to that list. But what we would want to do is have an actual sample of that, bring it before our historic staff, so they can give us comments, and then we will be able to use those comments at a future meeting. Because of the social distancing and our office is not fully open, I don't know if we can have it ready for the next meeting, since historic staff are not in the office, but I think we can put that on the list for a future.
Okay, thank you. Our next case, district case 20-03-004, 1537 North High Street. Staff report.
Yep. The applicant is proposing a wall sign and a permanent hanging window sign, as well as temporary window signage while the interior is under construction. The wall sign will consist of flush-mounted channel lettering measuring a total of 22 square feet, 20 inches high, and 157 inches long, and a depth of five inches. The channel lettering will have an aluminum return and acrylic face that will be blue towards behind the wall. The permanent hanging window sign will hang in the window panel south of the main doors and measure a total of five square feet with lettering measuring between 2.3 and 7.5 inches high. The sign will be constructed of aluminum and have a coked face with only the lettering being LED illuminated. Lastly, the applicant proposes a temporary window signage to conceal interior construction work. Staff recommends conditional approval. The university district plan states lettering for wall signs be between eight and 16 inches high. As the wall sign lettering measures 20 inches in height, staff requests a reduction to 16 inches for consistency with plan guidelines. The wall sign otherwise meets the plan guidelines. Permanent hanging window sign and temporary window signs do not violate the plan guidelines. Staff recommends approve with conditions, with the conditions being wall sign lettering height be reduced from 20 inches to 16 inches.
Thank you. And is the representative from, and I don't know if I'm saying this correctly, Lainer, Lainer Signs here?
Yes.
And did I say that correctly, Lainer?
Yep, Lainer.
Okay, and would you please identify yourself for the record?
Greg Bunger with Lainer Signs.
Thank you. And do you swear, affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please continue.
So the, the temporary signage of the window is basically just to conceal construction. I, I think the, the client is wanting the, the wow factor when it opens and trying to not let people know exactly what it is during the construction. And the, the hanging wall, well, back to the, the window signage, you know, that, we didn't really specify a material for that. I don't know if you guys, you know, want to make a recommendation of what that, that should be. It'll be inside the window, or we could do it on the outside with, with a vinyl, you know, sticky but material, graphic, or it could be a banner that hangs inside, just something to conceal inside. And for the interior hanging sign, it's permanent. It's just a small sign that lights up in the window, I think, more to, to get foot traffic that walks by, because, you know, the sign, you know, on the wall is pretty much straight above your head, and, you know, if you're walking down the sidewalk, I don't think you can be able to see that sign as well. So that's the reason for the hanging sign in the window. And for the exterior sign up on the facade, that, you know, I, I would be open to do that, you know, recommend that to the client to take that down to 16 inches. I don't think that would be a problem. Those are just standard aluminum channel letter with LED lighting and acrylic faces. And I'll answer, try to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Questions or comments from the commission?
Greg, I have a question about the way the text is located on the surface. Is there a reason why it's not placed symmetrically over the front, over the two doors, shifted to the left?
Yeah, that, I don't know. That's, the client gave me that mock-up, and that's where, where he wanted. I don't know if he was, if that pole, if he had that pole in mind and, and didn't want to block the sign at all. That, I'm not sure, but, you know, if you're recommending centering it over the door, I don't think that would be an issue.
Well, I'm, I'm guessing it might be that it's centered over the three bays because that square-ish sign that's below then makes a, a composition, doesn't quite feel right to me. I feel like those are separate things, and I think you articulated very well why the two signs are meant to exist. One you see from a distance and the other you see passing by on the sidewalk. So if that's the case, to me, I think it would read better from across the street to see the larger text higher up centered over those doors. I don't know what other people...
Yeah. I mean, he might, he might want it there. I, to me, it kind of looks like that might be centered over his tenant's space instead of the doors. I think his, his doors are offset to the, to the north, one window. I think he's got four on the left and like two and a half maybe on the right or so. And I think maybe he meant to center that over his tenant's space instead of the doors.
Right, but of course, when you're in the tenant's space, you don't see it. You see it from the street.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, this is Keone. I, I would agree with KB. As a side note, KB, notice how the, the doors don't even line up with the cutout in the sidewalk to get to the door.
Oh, yeah, yikes.
Dimension, I have some dimensional questions, because I think there's something wrong here. The height of the black band, do you know the dimension of the black band? The height? Okay, well, here, here, let me tell you what, what I think. The door, the doors are three foot wide. I, I'm fairly certain of that. So if you look at the, look at the millions that project above the door, and the width between that, that glass there would be three feet. If you take that three feet and rotate it up, I would have, I would have trouble believing that that band is much more than 24, 27 inches high. And then you tell me that the, that your sign, or, or staff said the sign's 20 inches. I suspect either it's less than 20 inches, or the 20 inches is measured from the bottom of the eight, which is a descender, to the top of the capital. And maybe that's 20. If that's 20, I would, I would tell you the sign probably doesn't really want to be much smaller than it is now. So I, I, see nowhere in the, in the file here, I don't see it, I don't see a sign drawing. I see drawings of prototypical letters, but there's no dimension drawing of the sign you're making other than the square sign. Is there a reason for that?
Well, there should be.
I, I don't see one.
Mark, if you...
Mark, if you scroll down, I think that, that is part of the application. Yeah.
I think Frank's, this is Keone. I think Frank's point is if you compare it to the first applicant today, the day-night sign at 1590 High Street, that sign, that applicant had drawings of the entire sign and dimensions of all the elements. And by comparison, we don't have anything equivalent for this application.
There should be a drawing of, of the letter height. I, I submitted it.
Do you, do you have it on you?
Yeah.
Can you show it to us?
Yeah, let me, let me print, print it out right here.
Anyway, what, we think about the height of the sign. Forget about how many inches it is. It, it doesn't look that big to me. But what do you guys think?
I'm actually okay with it graphically because of the delicacy, the small dimension of the letters themselves. I, I have a question. What does shake number eight mean?
I have no idea. I think it's, it's some sort of
No idea.
Well, it's, it's a, it's a spin of some coffee. I, I do know that.
Spin of some coffee.
Oh, it does say milkshake and coffee.
Some sort of high-end coffee that has, you know, a, I don't know, you know, all kinds of stuff on top of it, you know, to, to make it, make the coffee into something that looks like it's, I don't know, you're sipping it on the beach or something.
Really build up those calories.
Yeah.
I like it.
Only for coffee.
Mark?
You all can see this or not?
Uh, I can pull it up in the folder system, too, if Mark Rossen can share it.
And what do the dimensions say? What do those dimensions say there?
Well, that's 20 inches. That's 20 inches, and it's not from the bottom of the eight. It's 20 inches top of the S.
From the S.
Yes.
I'm just having trouble believing that, given what I see in the environment. But whatever. I would hate to see you make it 20 inches, build it at 20 inches, and, and realize that 20 inches is bigger than what is being shown in this photograph. That's what I would be worried about.
Well, you've got typically on a, on a, on a window, well, window
Typically, sorry.
Are about 30 inches on a windows, on a wide on a door. I don't know what those windows on that door are.
That door is 30 wide. It's gotta be.
Yeah.
What's your eye tell you, Keone?
Uh, I'm looking at the street view. It might be a little taller in the street view than it shows up on the applicant's material. I mean, you know, I don't know. That's, keep in mind that, that, you know, we're also accounting for the Google Cars camera distortion and whatnot.
Sure.
I mean, the, I, I think kind of where I'm at is the, I think that the, as KB said, the, the delicacy of the design is kind of nice. It sits within the band just fine. But the, the application's a little incomplete in terms of typically, I mean, that, that's better. But generally, we would expect to see that in relationship to the building behind it. So, you know, in the absence of something telling us where the top and the bottom of the black band is, it's a little hard to say with certainty that, you know, this is the right decision.
So I, I do have a memo, a, a measurement for that. It should be on one of the forms that I sent. That area is 2 foot 3 inches tall.
There you go. That helps. All right, 27 inches. So I don't, I'm, I'm sorry, but I don't believe that S is 20 inches if that's 27 inches.
Yeah, I mean, I would agree with Frank. Well, if you look, the issue is if you look at how much the figure eight drops below the, the line of the text, if, if the S is really 20 inches, and if the, if the sign is centered up within the black band that's 27 inches high, the blue eight is going to drop below the bottom of the band and into the frame of the window. I guess my suggestion would be verify the black band is indeed 27 inches. And if the black band is indeed 27 inches, then you might want to reconsider the design a little bit. And I would certainly come back with something that shows us how the sign fits within the black band. I mean, like, if I look at that, like, that looks good. I, I would agree with something KB said earlier, which is shake number eight really ought to be centered above the doors, because you're trying to signify that you're going to the doors. Hopefully, they won't trip on that 16-inch curb that's in front of one of the doors. But, you know, that's, they can take that up with variety.
Right.
But, you know, that looks good. But I, I think the, I think you need to appropriately document what that really is.
Okay.
Because I, I think Frank's right. That's not a, that's not a 20-inch S if that, if that black band is 27 inches. Does that give you enough guidance to make the necessary changes to return?
Yeah. Yeah, it does.
Okay.
Okay. Any final comments or questions?
Anything with the, the hanging sign? Is that, is that good?
I, I, this is KB. I'm curious about the dimensions of the hanging sign, why it's not square when it looks like it's trying to be square, why it's 28 by 26. I feel like the text, milkshake and coffee is
It's really tight.
Yeah, really tight.
I, I don't, I don't have an answer for that. That's, the, the client designed that. So, I mean, if you'd rather it be square, we could make it, we could make it 28 by 28 if that's more eye appealing.
I would suggest that. I would also suggest reducing the size of the text at the bottom, milkshake and coffee.
Reducing that size?
Yes, to give more space in the, in the text. Re-evaluate the composition, because if you look at the frame around shake number eight, and then you look at the text at the bottom of that graphic, it looks like they don't
It's gonna fall off the edge.
Yeah, they don't concur, and the, the dimensions don't work well. So some, there are many ways you could do it. So I'm not going to make a suggestion. But some adaptation of the text at the bottom that makes the whole composition hold together better.
Okay.
The square of the stacked logo is much nicer than the horizontal logo, but you obviously don't have room for it.
Right.
Any other comments? Okay. Thank you for coming in.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Next case, case number 20-03-006, 1689 North Fourth Street. Staff report, please.
Top. The carport will be behind the residential structure and be behind from vehicular tra-
Can you turn that over?
Yes. Can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. The applicant is proposing to fill in a gravel area adjacent to an alley with asphalt and build a carport on top. The carport will be behind the residential structure and be hidden from vehicular traffic traveling on Fourth Street. The carport will have four parking lanes approximately eight foot wide each. Dimensions of the carport are 20 foot long, 40 foot wide, and eight foot high. It is similar to other parking structures in the area. The carport is similar in design to others found in the area and is aligned with existing carports in the alley. The university district plan states that existing pattern should inform new construction. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. And is Mr. Brian Grimm on the call?
I, I think you got the wrong applicant.
Brian Grimm?
Brian.
I'm here. Don't worry. All right. And do you swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do.
All right. Please continue. Your presentation.
Great. So thanks, Mark, for displaying. What we're looking to do is to improve the back area of the, of the parking area, which is currently all gravel. And we are looking to also gain some protection, protection from a large, seemingly walnut tree, which is hanging right there at that same location. We don't want to remove the tree, obviously. So what we're looking to do is build a carport that would be aligned per staff recommendation with the other structures in the street, or in the alleyway, I should say, so that we have consistency, but then also provide the protection. The coloring of the carport itself would match the house exterior with a pewter gray top, a, the black trim and white cables. Any questions?
This is
No wording?
This is Keone. Can you elaborate on the construction of the carport? What is this thing made out of?
Uh, yeah. So it's going to be, it's purchased from a company called Georgia Portable Buildings. It is built out of a certified aluminum that is certified for up to 140 miles an hour wind and says 30 pounds per square foot snow load rating. And it's, you know, it's a primarily a metal, metal structure.
Can you show us the manufacturer's literature?
Uh, I think it's, see, did Mark, is there a Georgia Portable quote with that? Right voice?
Alternately, if staff can Google Georgia Portable Buildings, they appear to have a gallery of steel carports, which I assume this is meant to be one of.
That's correct.
Aluminum or steel?
Uh, I mean, aluminum sided. I would suggest probably steel vertical stanchions.
Yeah. So the, the actual framework, frame is steel, and the siding is aluminum.
This is a manufactured product that, that you
Correct.
Out of a catalog, correct?
That's correct.
And what are you doing for the pavement? What are you doing, what are you resting this on? And how are you anchoring it to the ground? And what's all that about?
So the, the, we'd be paving the ground with, I think it was a four-inch pavement, four-inch thickness pavement would be anchored in through to the pavement with
Well, I wonder.
Double.
That existing pavement?
No, currently it is gravel. We're asking to pave the area as well.
So you're gonna, you're gonna pave it with asphalt or concrete slab-on-grade?
Yeah, asphalt.
This entire area in, in the site plan that's, that's sort of shaded, that you're paving all that in asphalt?
Uh, that would, that would be the plan to keep consistency.
Ooh. Well, if you can't park east of the, of the garage, why would you pave their backyard?
Well, it's currently gravel. There's no grass. I mean, we could, could convert it to grass, but it's, it would just be considered, or we can leave it as gravel as well. It's, we're, we're, we're trying to work more aligned with what is, would be required if there's a code or anything that requires us to pave the entire space. But we would, you know, it'd save us money if we didn't. But we're just trying to keep it consistent and
No, you're also not going to be doing that tree any favors if you pave over, because gravel breathes a lot better than asphalt, so.
Yeah, gravel's permeable. So water gets to the roots of the tree. And once you turn it to asphalt, then you've got a new heat buildup and
Yeah.
And water retention problems.
I would not asphalt that.
Yeah.
Okay. That's, that's fine.
I think, I think as a
Save us money.
Yeah, I mean, as, as a structure, I think it would be an amenity to the house to have a yard in the back. But independent of that, I certainly would not asphalt that.
Robert, I'm also wondering why the shelter, the, the roof is positioned where it is on the site. You're leaving it 15 feet set back from the alley. Is there, why it's positioned in that particular spot?
It was requested that we align it with other structures in the alleyway. So if you see the garage, just, just adjacent to the building, I think it's actually, I think it's west of the building.
Yeah.
That's, so we, it was the request to have it to keep it lined.
Yeah, that's north.
So it's north, okay.
Runs north and south. So, but it also looks like when I read in the aerial plan you've shown us, that it doubles the number of cars you can get on the site.
Well, the, the carport is for four cars.
Right.
That's the intent.
I see. You're not planning that cars would be stacked?
I think she's asking because the, the garage that's north of you is in the same position. People park there behind the garage.
Yeah, I don't know why they don't park in the garage, to be honest. And we're not looking for that. We're looking just to keep it lined up evenly and keep the cars on because I think it's actually dangerous to put it too close to the alleyway like they have it, their, their position.
It doesn't show up on the, the applicant's material because it's just out of the frame. But if you look on Google Earth, the, at the north end of the alley, there's a house running north-south that's right up against the edge of the alley. So while I guess I can kind of understand the, the logic that planning originally made to request that the carport be put in line with the other garages, it seems to me that there's precedent to move it closer to the alley. If the applicant not intending to park cars in that 15-foot margin, it certainly, I think, would be better to put the carport closer to the alley and therefore have a, a nicer kind of backyard and less asphalt pavement.
I think the typical number, Keone, is five feet off the alley. That is kind of
That seems pretty reasonable to me.
And probably better for the health of the tree.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know, I guess I don't love the pre-manufactured carport, but I get that it makes sense from a budget perspective. It seems to me reasonable that if you put it five foot out the, the alley, and you limited the asphalt to the alley side of the carport, plus the carport, and then everything beyond that, you know, was gravel or dirt, or, you know, maybe you can get some decent landscaping in there. I'd live with that trade-off, because it, it would give your house a nice backyard. It would reduce the overall amount of pavement, and it would kind of better, sort of become a better amenity to the neighborhood.
I can see that.
You mentioned wind load. You know, wind load is hot, is dependent on what you anchor it to, because this is a giant sail that you're building here. And you've said that you're going to anchor it, I think I heard you say you're going to anchor it to the asphalt. Asphalt is not cohesive. You, you're, you're not going to be able to anchor it to the asphalt and expect it to not sail away. So I, I, I'm hoping you're telling me that you're going to put some proper foundations to anchor this thing to, because this is about ballast. It's not about bearing. It's about ballast to prevent the thing from blowing away.
Hey, Frank, this is Keone. I can actually, my guess, because I have, I hate to admit that I have one of these, because that's what the house had when I bought it. And I personally hate it, but I've been too lazy to replace it. I think it's anchored down with helical anchors. They, um,
Okay.
Typically, there's like a bottom runner that kind of connects the, the steel posts at the bottom of the, the carport. And then they'll put in like a helical anchor that will go through the pavement down into the soil.
Are you
I, I don't think it's just ass and I I don't think it's just fastened into the asphalt.
Are you are you installing this? Are you having this done by the man?
The manufacturer, yeah, I am by no means capable of doing that type of work.
Okay, you know, I haven't seen any photos of this thing there. It could be that it's an elegant pre-manufactured metal structure. But in any case, I would like to see it if it's going to be there, like to see it black or dark whatever, but not white. You know, I I think this needs to go away. Not not be this thing for light to reflect off of. That'd be my thought.
So just to kind of to rephrase a little bit, the top is the is the same color pewter gray as the roof of the house. The house itself is white with black trim. And then the small gables on the side were the only piece that would be white and everything else has a black trim on it. So are you suggesting a black cable?
I would suggest to make the whole thing black.
Okay.
I mean, it's an industrial product and it's metal and and I I I would think a monochromatic solution for something that's got little spindly pieces to it is somehow more and keep what it is than trying to, you know, say that it has a white gable and black trim and that sort of thing. I don't know if anybody else has that thought or other thoughts, but that's mine.
Just to be clear, what is the roof constructed of? Is it a is it standing seam?
Standing seam.
If I look at your.
It's metal. It's corrugated metal, Carrie.
Okay, okay.
Can staff find the website and can you put it up to what we're?
Mark, are you able to share that? Or is that something I need to do? I know you have control of it, but yeah.
Okay, which one is it?
Let's see, so it'd be similar to sample B, just shorter. There's a direct sample. I just kind of find it real quick. Give me one minute here. I can get the URL.
You can have parties under it, Kiony, the one you have.
Mine only fits two cars.
I see. It's a smaller party, but you know.
So there's the the typical carport is considered to be, you know, length also more long and wide. But because of the shape of the property, ours is more wide than long. And and so a lot of the examples you see on their website are not quite exactly the 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 view you'd see.
There we go. Frank, you can see in that bottom photo, you can see the anchor. There you go. So you you see the sort of bolt coming through to the nut, so that's.
See the bolt?
I believe that's a I believe that's a helical anchor that goes into the ground.
I see. Well, okay, anything to make sure it doesn't blow away, that's why.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen.
So you'll have posts between the spaces and the ends are open?
The the ends are open, yes. So I have actually a picture here that if I can just put it here into the.
Well, there's kind of an isometric that was submitted that that it's open on the ends.
I just, Mark, I just posted a URL in the in the link to chat here for the WebEx. You click on that link, that's the exact style.
Oh, good.
Did that come through to you, Mark? There you go.
Yeah, I got it.
I think you painted bright red also, or or orange or bright blue.
Yeah, so that's exactly the the carport style.
Oh, there you go.
Almost to the T. And then really the the gable that's facing you at the bottom picture, that's what we're saying would be the white part.
It could be that color right that is shown right there, right?
Sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
That doesn't look so bad to me.
No, I don't think it should be white. I think that it appears gray to me. I think that's that would be a better choice.
Just just that exact one. Of course, you have to only park white cars under it.
Yeah.
True. I'll tell my wife that's that that you gave me that reason.
Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion for approval?
Yeah, this is Kiony. I'll make the motion. I move to approve the applicant's submission with the following conditions. The carport be moved to the west so that it is within five feet of the property line. And the asphalt paving be limited to the apron west of the carport as well as the carport itself.
Thank you, and that was a motion.
I don't care about the color. If someone wants as a preference, tell me what they have.
I I will second it if somebody hasn't already and but offer that the the colors as shown in the example are just perfect.
That's a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying your name.
A B, yes.
Carrie, yes.
Frank, yes.
Kiony, yes.
Doreen, yes.
Steve, yes. Motion is unanimously approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Case, case number two zero dash one zero three dash zero zero nine nineteen fifty one, Indianola Avenue. Let's go ahead and start with the exact.
Yes. The applicant is requesting two area variances in order to change the listed property use from a single-family dwelling to a sorority slash rooming house. The property has operated as a sorority house since the early nineteen nineties. No alternations or improvements to the structure are proposed. The applicant is proposing one bike rack and a parking space. This will be reduced from twelve to six with one ADA accessible parking space. Planning is supportive of the proposal condition on bicycle parking being added. The University District Plan states parking variances be revised based on the presence of on-story parking, extended variances requested, size and nature of use, and potential impact on adjacent residential uses. The plan goes on the state bicycle parking be incorporated into development projects with additional consideration in higher density developments. Staff on the requested parking reduction is supportable and request bicycle parking be included at the rear of the property to offset the reduced number of parking spaces. Staff recommends approval with with conditions that three U-Lock bike racks be placed on site. And just a caveat, this site plan was updated late yesterday. And I don't know if you guys had, so it is slightly different than the one that I sent out a week prior. They did add one bike rack to the rear of the building and then that ADA accessible parking space instead of just the six straight nine by eighteen parking spaces.
Thank you, and it's Mr. Brian Grimm on the line.
Hi, Craig Moncrief. I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Craig Moncrief, and who are you with?
Frank Law Firm.
Thank you. Do you swear a firm testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please continue.
So, yeah, this the the building on this property was built in the early nineteen hundreds. And it was used as a single-family residence for a while until early nineteen nineties, at which point it was it became more student housing and a sorority. Been like that ever since. And for whatever reason, the use listed on the building card was not changed from single-family to sorority. So we have the issue now of trying to get a rooming house license. You have to change the use that's listed. In order to do so, you have to meet the zoning code. So you're trying to to meet the zoning code with a building that was in a property that was constructed in the early nineteen hundreds. So trying to clean that up, just two area variances here. No changes to the site except for the bike racks and basically putting putting paint on the parking lot.
Thank you. And and is your, besides changing the zoning, is it, are you adding the three bike racks? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, they can. They would do that.
Okay. Okay, I I I just wanted to make sure. Questions, comments from commissioners?
I have a question. It's Doreen. When actually was this dwelling? It was never legally made into a rooming house? Is that what I'm understanding? Forget the forget the fact that it was built in nineteen hundreds. If it was a single-family use until the you know, last decade, then it was illegally used after that as a rooming house?
Sort of. So the the use listed on the building card is single-family. For whatever reason, I I did find that there was a rooming house that license that expired in nineteen ninety-five. So I'm not sure exactly what the details are there. But that rooming house license did expire in ninety-five.
And so what is the sorority? Wouldn't they have had to actually verify that it had the proper licensure for to be considered a sorority with Ohio State?
That I'm not sure about. I mean, they've been there since, or sororities have been there since at least the mid nineteen nineties, and they haven't had any issues. It's just only recently.
And we can verify that they actually were there.
Yeah, I did. I did. I did a search on Columbus City Directory just to get a better timeline.
And so what sorority was this?
It's Visigna Row.
And they are still in the building and wish to remain there, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And how many people reside in the building?
It'll be ten to twelve.
I think that's too large for code. I think single-family properties are limited to eight unrelated people.
Well, we're trying to change the use to rooming house.
Then I can tell you I will oppose it.
Yeah, we're having some really thoughtful issues, given the pandemic that's on about communal living in general in the university area. And it seems as though that there are just so many loopholes under which they exist. Legal rooming houses, illegal boarding houses, religious communal living. And I would be very reluctant to venture into this one until we have more clarification as to where we're going.
Well, I'll I'll tell you, we're trying to, we're going through the process of making this a legal rooming house. The first step is to comply with the zoning code. So we're asking a variance in order to change the use so that we can get the rooming house.
No, and I I applaud the fact that you're trying to make this legal. Please don't misunderstand me. It's it's not but it's not solely your your issue. It's a community issue at present. And so I'm also wondering, in order for this to happen, if it shouldn't have come before the university area commission. But I leave that to the city and Patrick and Christopher to weigh in on.
So the Doreen, the action, this is Christopher. The action before us today is a request for recommendation on a BZA variance. And in addition to that, the COA for the site plan and design shown. So it's it's not a request at this point for any recommendation related to a rezoning or or use variance. It is a BZA variance at this point. So whether that went before the UAC, I'm not sure. Obviously, we're we're moving ahead with with our commission and board meetings. And whether the UAC has been able to do that, I can't speak to that or if they haven't heard this. But normally, that's that is the path that we would expect applicants to take is to go before the UAC for any variance or rezoning recommendations before coming to to the review board. But there's obviously extenuating circumstances.
So, yeah, to give more background, we're we'll be in front of the the zoning committee on the first and the full commission on the seventeenth. They basically shut down for the month of May, and this property is zoned AR four. So it's permitted to have a rooming house on the property. The only reason that we're in front of you is for two area variances. And that's for the number of parking spaces and where the parking spaces are located. And the reason that they're there is because of the way the building is situated.
This is Kiony. I just want to be clear about this. The property, you're not asking for a variance in terms of the use of the property. It's allowable that the property can be used for an apartment or a rooming house. The only thing you're in front of us for is approval on variances. I think one of it is the insufficient number of parking spaces and the others being too close to the property line without landscaping. Is that correct? I just want to make sure I really understand why you're here.
Yes, that's correct. I was just giving the background as to how we got here because it's a weird situation with the change of use. But yes, it's it's properly zoned to be a sorority and to to contain a rooming house. We're just here because in order to change the use, we need to get two area variances for the parking lot.
So here's kind of my position, and I apologize with to some of my colleagues, but I was in front of the UAC in support of a different property near me with a not dissimilar condition. I don't have a problem. I think the variances you're asking for are comparatively minor. And your use is allowed. If you're if indeed this is true that your use is allowed for the property, then I don't believe the variances you're asking for are significant enough to stand in the way in the way of the use for the property.
Other comments?
I think I, well, I do. I think I agree with Kiony on this.
I guess I am just Doreen, just a little reluctant to make sure we're not putting the cart before the horse. And I understand that the variance is requested would be fairly minor to the condition of what will become of the building and that it is that rooming houses are approved in AR four. But I am just also hesitant about this one since this is a a larger issue. And and although the present owner may not have had anything to do with this, the fact that it rooming house license had been allowed to lapse and a sorority went in there or other student congregant living is very disturbing.
Yeah, this is.
Doreen, hi. Sorry, go ahead, Katie.
This is KB, and I'm I'm going to be a little bit less generous than Doreen on the Brian Grimm issue because he owns owns many properties in the area, and he should have known better when he got into that piece of property that it wasn't meeting the requirements. He, as a property manager and a owner, he he has the responsibility to know that his properties are, you know, appropriately filed. And because I live about six houses north from this property, and I have a lot of photographs of the parties from the front yard, I feel that this is an opportunity for us to think more broadly and to be more responsible about the density in the neighborhood. Right now, the four-three-two-oh-one zip code has the highest density of COVID in Franklin County. And the density issue that Doreen so well articulates is one that's going to become more and more important to us. And I think it's unconscionable that whatever the conditions were that allowed somebody at some point without getting the correct approval to have twelve people in a building that's not typically allowing more than eight unrelated people to live there, which is the prior situation. So I don't know how it became this, but I think if this is the situation, it's an opportunity for us to rethink, to intervene, and to try to make the appropriate changes. I realize you're just asking for repainted parking and some bike racks. But now we've opened a can of worms. And Mr. Grimm knows better.
So this this is Kiony. I would like to offer, I think Doreen made a good point that the tradition here on the UIDRB has been to allow the UAC zoning code, even though their recommendations are independent of ours and don't influence ours in any way. Traditionally, we've waited on them to make recommendations both within the zoning and before the full board before we waited. I don't see any reason, even in the circumstances, to deviate from that. So I think it's reasonable to stick with that approach and given that it's going to be scheduled in front of the zoning and the full board soon. And uh, given that it's going to be scheduled in front of the zoning um in the full board soon. Um, I would write, my personal feeling at this point is that we table this application, we allow the UAC to weigh in. And then we discuss the merits of the case.
This is KB. I support that choice.
Any other comments?
No, I support that also. Thank you, KB, and for explaining that a little bit more um succinctly.
Okay. Any other comments?
Do you know when the next meeting would be?
It's Monday.
The twenty-fifth of June.
Right, but the zoning committee for area commission meets on Monday.
Yeah, we're we're on the agenda.
I'm sorry, we're on the same.
Yeah, I mean, that's and that's why I'm making the recommendation. You're on, you're on the agenda for zoning. You're on in the agenda for the full commission. So you'll come back to us in a month. They will both have weighed in and that'll provide us some context for our discussion.
Mr. Grimm, are you, are you okay with the tabling uh as the suggestion was till next meeting? Or would you like to move forward with a vote this evening?
Uh, no, that's fine. If we're on the next month, that's fine.
Okay. All right. And uh, we will table that motion until uh next meeting. Thank you.
Craig, say hi to Don for me. I haven't seen him in a long time.
Yeah, we'll do, we'll do.
All right.
Mr. Chair, can we have a motion to table?
Yes, I'm sorry. Do we have a motion to table uh case two zero dash zero three dash zero zero nine until next month?
So moved. This is Frank.
Second, Doreen.
It's a motion second. All in favor, say aye or say your name.
KB, aye.
Kerry, aye.
Frank, aye.
Kiony, aye.
Doreen, aye.
And uh, Steve, aye. Motion is carried. Next case, case number two zero dash zero three dash zero one three, fourteen hundred North High Streets.
The applicant is proposing to install one two foot by six inches by thirteen foot by one inch internally illuminated channel letters and Pizza Hut logo. Lettering will be two foot high and have an overall length of ten feet by one fourth inches. The approximate square footage of the sign will be thirty-six point two square feet and thread rods will be used to secure the signage to the building. Staff recommends a conditional approval. The university district plan states lettering for wall signs will be between eight inches and sixteen inches. As the wall sign on on the lettering measures twenty-four inches in height, staff requests a reduction to sixteen inches for consistency with plan guidelines. The wall sign otherwise meets plan guidelines. Staff recommends approval with conditions. The kitchen, conditions being wall sign, lettering height be reduced from twenty-four inches to sixteen.
Thank you. Uh, is uh Melody Ward here?
Bruce Sommerfelt on behalf of Melody Ward, on behalf of.
Okay. Uh, can you say your last name again?
Sommerfelt, S-O-M-M-E-R-F-E-L-T.
Thank you very much. Can you swear a firm testimony you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please uh continue with your presentation.
And Mark or um, I forgot if you have some of the other exhibits that that they shared with you that might, you might put up there too. But Pizza Hut's on um, that kind of a rapid um growth spurt right now in Franklin County. We've got six of these locations that we're trying to open in the next twelve to fourteen weeks. This one being the next one that's going to open, I think, in the next two to three weeks. Um, obviously, they have a standard, a brand book and a recognizable logo and some guidelines to follow. And the reason that this application is in front of you is different size variance, as you know. Um, we didn't do the the design of the placement. This is done by their national sign company record. And I believe it was put based on the best impact functionality and probably aesthetic layout with for for that particular storefront, which is shy twenty feet left to right. Um, I think we did an exhibit comparison that a sixteen inch letter height would look like on that storefront. You kind of see how drastic this was reduced in uh this complete function, functional looking sign. We researched or the national sign company record researched and they found that there were some other locations that did exceed the twenty-four inch letter size, indeed the sixteen inch letter size. And some of those exhibits, I think, have been included and they're just up on the screen. I believe some of them are actually within this same parcel or in the same building. That we would look at the size variance to get some recognition, get the logo to be visible. It is a large building, five stories tall, but we're certainly at the street level. We don't have any projecting blade sign for the per visibility of the traffic going north and south. And we're slightly weak to bump out of the building there. And um, that's the, that we allow and have the size of signage that is in front of you guys.
Thank you. Open up for comments or questions from commissioners?
Well, I personally think the size is uh fine, if not too small. Uh, and I think it should go higher and I think it should be centered on the masonry open.
Hey, Frank, this is Kiony. I've had a question for you. What size do you actually think the sign is in that photograph? You look at the number of bricks it's covering?
Yeah, it may be, I'm trying to count here. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Uh, it's, it's maybe, it's maybe twenty inches at the max. Uh, it, I think. I'm I'm not looking at the circle, though. Circle is uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I don't know. The circle is is significant. Well, you can see the three O door below it. So the circle is is maybe thirty inches.
Typically, three bricks is a block.
Yeah.
The circles should be.
Three, three brick is eight inches, but uh.
Twenty-four inches. Yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. It's, I guess, I don't, I would agree with you. I think it'd probably be bigger. It's fine, large. Um, I think the illustration's not accurate. It seems, it seems like the um, the photo collage sign is actually smaller than uh what the applicant's asking for and what the dimension drawing shows. Um, it might be just fine, bigger, but I personally would like an accurate depiction.
Sure. The other question, Bruce, is I suspect uh, the reason why they may have put it where they put it is because they can get penetrated uh through into ceiling space, whereas it goes much higher. It's going to be uh into the structure and into the parapet, which makes the insulation more difficult. Uh, so uh, but that, but I don't, I don't care about the difficulty. That'll be your problem. But I'm, I'm trying to wonder why, why it got put so tight to the bottom and also in a funny location side to side.
I don't know why it's not centered over that storefront. I don't know if it's something to do with the entry there or if they think they get a little bit better, better visible for northbound traffic being in the eastbound lane, um, you know, on that, on that knockout. But aesthetically, it would be more appealing to have that storefront left to right. And we could, I could certainly look and see if we can go higher. I don't know if there's a structural beam in behind there and we get to the parapet, but um, you know.
Well, you, you're going to feed it from the bottom. Uh, you could feed it from the bo, I, I mean, from the back from the bottom, right? So I would think you could move it up and be all right.
And I can get a depiction show more, more accurate scale on there. Uh, you know, for that, so so it's a big, more representative. So if the big, the size is okay, you can see it visually correct.
We don't know what size. It's hard to say without knowing what the exact dimension is on, on the exact dimension of the facade.
That circle is, is three-four inches tall. So if it's a three O door, it's, you know.
How much is the circle again, please? Thirty-four inches, is that what you said?
Thirty-five.
Well, right, the outside, the black backer on that, that.
Pizza. Okay.
And um.
Well, here, the whole, the overall side, what's the overall length of the sign, including the circle?
Thirteen feet.
It's thirteen feet. Okay, let's go back to then to the photograph. I've got a closer.
Small. There's no way that's thirteen foot in length.
No, I don't think.
As shown on that photo collage.
Okay, well then.
To Frank's point, those are a pair of three O doors. That's six feet. Even if the window's four, that's ten. Um, the sign is just left of the door. It goes a little bit over the the center sort of column divider. But it's probably, I mean, it's showing at twelve foot, maybe if you're lucky.
Well, I think thirteen would probably be okay. Uh, I I have a sense.
Centered.
I I think it'd be fine, a little larger. I think it probably should be centered uh side to side in the storefront. Um, I think it should be centered probably vertically. I agree with kind of Frank's points on both of those. I think I'd like to see it the right size, right location and right size. I don't, personally, I don't, this is Kiony, I don't have a problem with it being um larger than the guidelines typically require. I think, you know, something that Frank has often said, it's more a question of context. How does it relate to the uh, the architecture it sits on or in? I do think it's important to accurately, um, for the applicant's materials to accurately reflect the installed condition.
Other comments or questions? Doreen, do we have a motion to approve?
With the conditions of it being centered? Were there any other conditions?
Well, well, we wanted it moved up. I don't know if it.
Right, right.
Yeah, I don't know, Kiony, if it wants to be centered vertically or or hugging down a little bit. That, that's the problem I've got here. It'd be nice. This is the first sign, right, on this whole stretch of like four storefronts?
I think there's some other exhibits you see. I think it may be on the masonry, some other exhibits on the, on the.
Yes, but on the brick, on the brick facades, this is the first one, right?
Looks like it might give a soldier course, a recess soldier course. That's what, the eight, twelve, eighteen inches above that, that might, that might be a good baseline.
So I don't see any soldier course, sorry. Where's the soldier course?
There's a recessed brick or something that's maybe it's.
I think that is bad construction, Bruce, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I have to agree with Frank on that one.
Right and center. Let's figure out what's behind there and how best to fish the wiring. I think when it's bigger, the, now the centered vertically might, might, might be more appealing. It's a little undersized here, so it might look a little misleading, but foot in length might with that vertical.
I don't know. Is staff, is staff comfortable with with making, with taking a look at this and and administering this? Or or do we need to ask Bruce to redo the drawing and come back?
Trying to.
I think if you.
There's always staff could do it.
If you make, if you, if you make the uh requi, or the motion specific enough, if you want it centered on the storefront, centered between the parapet and the, the bottom of the, the brick there and at the same size appropriately or at the size proposed, but shown uh scaled appropriately, we can definitely make that happen.
That's good. We're drawing.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I, I move to repeat what Christopher just said.
There's seconds.
I second, Doreen.
A motion and a second. All in favor, say aye, say your name, signifying your acceptance.
KB, aye.
Kerry, aye.
Frank, aye.
Kiony, aye.
Doreen, aye.
And Steve, aye. Motion is unanimous. Thank you.
So we just get a vice exhibiting and if that, that beats approval, we'll get a certificate of approval from there, correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
All for your time.
Thank you. Next items are staff issued certificates of approval. Does anybody have any questions about any of the six staff issued certificates of approval?
Parking lot. What's parking lot?
Uh, they, it was improvements to a gravel parking lot. They were looking to um replace some crumbling uh parking stops.
I just think gravel parking lots were regaled.
It was just ma, uh parking lot maintenance. Yeah.
I have a question. The staff issued certificates of approval, is that something we need to vote on or approve or is that something we're just reviewing?
We usually make a motion and approve them and accept them.
Okay. Uh, there are no other questions. Do we have a motion to approve the staff issued certificates of approval?
I will do that, Doreen.
And do we have a second?
Kerry, second.
Okay, that's a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
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 And that's an aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion approved. Last one, board condition staff review certificate of approval. We have one, two items there. Anyone have any questions on them? Can we get a motion for approval?
I move to approve board condition staff review certificates of approval. This is Kiony.
I give you a second.
Second, Doreen. Uh, fine.
That's a motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All approved, same sign? Motion approved. Any new business?
Nope.
I want to thank Patrick and Christopher for helping us get this set up and being so patient with us.
Yes, it went pretty seamlessly. Nice work.
Very good.
Thank you for uh being patient with me as well.
And I think Steve has a future for virtual meeting running.
As long as we can get done in two hours.
There you go.
Excellent job, Steve.
Okay, thank you all. Meeting is, is done.
Thank you. See you next month.
Bye.
Bye. See ya.
Yeah.
Bye.